This is Georgia State Conference of the NAACP versus the Fayette County Board of Education. And Mr. Wahlberg is here for the appellant's. Ms. Ayden, you're going to make the argument again for the appellees. Mr. Wahlberg, you can begin when you're ready.
Your Honor, may I sit or exhibit on the easel?
You may proceed, counsel.
May it please the court, I am David Wahlberg. On behalf of the appellant's in this case, with me today for my firm is Sashi Cole. Your honors, the Board of Education is a different entity legally in many ways than the county commission. Number one, it is actually created by the constitution of the state of Georgia and the method of election is specifically dictated for Fayette County by the constitution. So when we talk about state policy, it's at the highest level there is. That constitutional provision dictates that there be at-large elections, five districts, residency districts, and that it bestows on the Board of Education the authority legally to redistrict itself after each census and in fact the duty to do so. I brought these blow-ups of these exhibits in evidence and that are also reproduced in our brief to show the relevant considerations that tell us an awful lot about this case. Just look at this. The one on the top right is the Board of Commissioners' existing districts before the lawsuit. The Board of Education districts that I've -- may I approach this, your honor?
Well, you can approach it, but it's probably better that you stay at the lectern since we're recording your argument.
Okay, thank you. On the top left, the Board of Education districts that were enacted after the 2010 census, that was by the Board of Education did it. It was not under compulsion of law or anything, and it came about this way. The Board of Education wanted to get this case resolved. They had the power to self-redistrict, and as the evidence is undisputed, they hired Ms. Linda Mengers, who this court has previously said is the most knowledgeable person in redistricting in the state of Georgia, has been doing it for 30 years. She'd been appointed a special master repeatedly by the district courts and the Supreme Court. They give her all these kudos. She understands district criteria, traditional criteria, and she understands giving minorities as fair a shot as you possibly can within the law. She drew that top-left district, and that was the highest black percentage district that could be drawn in Fayette County, consistent with traditional district criteria and consistent with one person, one vote.
And what is the percentage of African-American?
Forty-six, your honor. Yes, sir.
But you see, I thought that the Board of Education conceded a Section 2 violation in their amended illustrative plan that was submitted to the court pursuant to settlement.
No, they -- no, not with their amended illustrative plan. This plan, the parties tried to then agree that the Board could not change voluntarily to district elections. That was part of the constitution.
There was no concession of a Section 2 violation by the Board of Education in this record?
For the purpose of trying to get a consent order, change this plan up here to district elections. So a consent order was prepared. Initially, it had no admission of liability, and the county commission objected to that. It was changed, and for the purpose of an integrated consent order, it had admissions of liability in there which were a legal prerequisite to changing it. And that was part and parcel of that. Never amended the answer. Every single pleading outside of that attempted consent order was rejected by the court, said that this is as high a percentage district as you can possibly make consistent with the Constitution of the United States. In other words, to not make race the predominant consideration trumping traditional criteria. That was the consistent position of the Board at all times.
Okay, before we get to the merits, let's talk about the procedural posture of this case, because you make the argument in your brief, as I understand it, is that the court entered summary judgment against your client without notice and an opportunity to be heard, right?
Absolutely. We were never -- we were hit in a drive-by summary judgment motion against the county. Never. The parties, the plaintiffs and the Board of Education, the Board of Education's motion explicitly expressly excludes, if I say the Board, the plaintiff's motion for summary judgment explicitly excludes the Board of Education, excludes them, because we had anticipated based on what the court said that Judge Batton was going to give a 1292B certificate on his denial of the consent plan.
Right, but I mean, the Section 2 issue had been fully briefed, and is there anything that the court didn't have?
Sure, it didn't have trial. My gosh. I mean, it would be totally different. Summary judgment, you don't put up your whole case. You don't ask questions in depositions. You'd ask at trial.
But was the record fully developed?
No.
The record was not fully?
We never responded to a motion for summary judgment at all. None was ever made against us. We put nothing in in response to summary judgment, literally, number one. Number two, in terms of--
Discovery was not complete?
Of course not. I mean, it was not complete. There was no motion for summary judgment against us, so we made no response. So it wasn't complete even for summary judgment. And if you think of like, what about a trial context? You know, summary judgment record has nothing to do with a trial context. If I had, for example, and I wasn't the trial counsel in this case down below, but if Mr. Cooper, the plaintiff's expert, were on trial and cross-examination in front of the judge, that's a totally different matter.
So you're asking for a limit, a remand? A limited -- you're asking for a remand?
Your honor, first and foremost, we think that there was a threshold--
Let's not even talk about the merits right now.
Well--
Because, I mean, your strongest argument is that the court entered summary judgment against my clients without notice and an opportunity to be heard. I should have an opportunity to argue why summary judgment should not be entered, right?
Well, I don't know if that's our strongest argument. May I just--
Is that an argument?
Is there? That is absolutely an argument.
Okay.
We're -- I don't see a way around that one, but yes. But I think--
That's what I'm asking about now. And I'm trying to figure out, because the court entered summary judgment, and what was left to be done in the case before the court entered its summary judgment? I mean, it -- they're going to argue that the record was fully developed and the court had all the information it needed in order to determine whether or not there is a Section 2 violation with respect to the Board of Education. Tell me why that's not accurate.
Because there was no trial. I mean, there's all kinds of testimony evidence you put up on these cases. I've tried 30 of these, going back always really before this for the plaintiffs, and those cases are, you put up a lot of anecdotal testimony. You cross-examine witnesses who are making, I mean, Mr. Cooper, the plaintiff's expert, his testimony, I am confident, after cross-examination at trial before a district judge, would be very, very different than it is, stands on the record today, just by way of example. So even on the witnesses that are there, if there were no more witnesses, the record would look totally different than it does today. I am 100 percent sure of that. Plus, you would have other witnesses that you would bring in as well. I mean, for example, this issue of, you know, Fayette County was one of the first counties to quote "go Republican" in Georgia, one of the most Republican counties.
So there's still discovery to take place?
We thought there was. Plainters and defendants both agreed, my defendant is the Board of Education, we had submitted a joint discovery plan to the court, saying that pending, when they, after they filed their motion for summary judgment against the Board of County Commissioners, with the point being that after this issue of the consent order was resolved on appeal, because everyone thought it was going to be appealed, that we would then have a certain period of discovery. Only after the Board of Motion for Summary Judgment filed against the Board of County Commissioners, did later, the judge denied that, treated it as an extension of discovery. So retroactively, we lost the discovery that both the plaintiffs and the Board of Education thought they would have for the Board of Education case. So, but, you know, I think really they're honestly, and I know your honor says this is the merits, you don't want me to get to that right away, but if I could say just a couple of things on that.
Go ahead.
What these maps showed dramatically is this. From going from 46 percent to 50 percent, dropping down there, that's the plaintiff's illustrative plan, bottom-left. To get that extra 4 percent, you've got to jump through hoops. You've got to go and ignore traditional criteria. It's not simple. The reason is because the demographic history of Fayette County, in my experience doing any number of these cases, is totally unique. The African-American community today in Fayette County, they're new to that county. That's undisputed. It was 5 percent in the 1990 census, 10 percent in the 2000 census, and didn't get to 20 percent until the 2010 census. Proportional representation, which is not required by Section 2, was zero representatives on the boards until recently. No African-Americans even run for the Board of Education since 2006, and that includes the 2014 election under the court-ordered plan.
So how many African-Americans have run for the Board of Education in Fayette County altogether? How many? Is it seven or five? One, seven?
I don't honestly know the exact number. I apologize.
I think it's five.
Yeah, I'm -- yeah.
And none have ever been elected.
And none ran this year when there's this open seat the court created. What does that tell us? And if we look at the election returns, it tells--
What does that tell us? That's one of the factors.
And exactly.
The courts have said that's one of the most important Senate factors that the court takes into consideration.
It is a, definitely a factor, it's relevant, and as Mr. Tyson pointed out, we would be able to show if the case were tried, this isn't what's driving it. There's no more clear proof than it's politics, not race, in this last election, 2014, if the case is tried. But more importantly, it's going to cost everybody a ton of money to have the case tried. This plan was a, there was a total failure by the plaintiffs to show a Section 1 compliant plan. This plan, the only way that could be, and I just, if I could just read a couple of quotes from the undisputed evidence.
This case looks like a three-day bench trial. It would take more than that?
Well, not if there is, not if there is no reason for a trial, because there is no showing of a predicate district. That is a gross waste of judicial resources. It's expensive, and I wish a three-day bench trial sounded like nothing, but it's not. It's just not the way that things work in terms of experts, new witnesses, and everything else. This is not, I mean, I've, this is not a three-day bench trial, under any stretch of imagination. Mr. Cooper's a day, direct and cross. Mr. Morgan's a day, direct and cross, before you get to all the other stuff. That's just for drawing the district. This plan, what this plan shows so much on the left is, to go past 46, you can't do it without doing three things. Disregarding traditional principles, violating one person, one vote. You cannot do it. The evidence is undisputed, undisputed, your honor, that no plan that is compliant with one person, one vote is possible at 50 percent. That's undisputed.
They don't have an expert that says you can draw--
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. And the reason is, again, because the community, the black community, members of this community have moved down there, they aren't segregated like in a typical community in the South would be, where segregation caused people to live in the same community based on race. The African-American concentration is indeed in the northern half of the county, but it's totally dispersed through there. The reason is in the northern half of the county is it's closer to Atlanta, and that's where people move.
So what's the best evidence in the record that African-Americans in Fayette County can elect the candidate of their choice in a multi-member district?
Consistent with Section 2?
Yes.
Uh, I suppose the whole, we would have to go down and look at all the elections and so on. We'd look at every single one. They got to run. They didn't even run for this one.
Well, I thought you told me that five have run before, and they weren't elected.
I'm sorry, your honor?
At least five have run before for the Board of Education, and they weren't elected.
Well, I guess, number one, if a--
Based on polarized voting.
If someone had run, an African-American candidate who was Republican, in that county had run countywide who was Republican as, in the typical participating way, had been a real Republican, that person was as good as the white candidate, that person would have won. And that's what the testimony will show, if this case is tried.
All right.
Now, if, but this political difference, you know, I'm not saying black folks should be Republicans. But it's politics, it's what's driving it, it's a practical matter, and that's what the evidence will show. The other thing here is, again, no court has ever suggested that you can intentionally under-represent a district based on race, but that is exactly what the undisputed evidence shows, has been done and must be done in order to get to the 50 percent Bartlett level. And that, I'm going to reserve the rest of my time, which is minimal for rebuttal, your honor.
All right. We have your argument, counsel. Ms. Ayden, we'll hear from you again. I'm going to ask the people in the courtroom to kind of keep quiet, because it detracts from the court understanding the arguments and paying attention to the arguments of counsel. Go ahead, Ms. Ayden.
May it please the court?
Mm-hmm.
Your honors, during the district court proceedings, the Board of Education, resting on its settlement, even though we recognize it's not legally binding on them, failed to develop any contradictory evidence to challenge plaintiffs' Section 2 proof. They had notice of the depositions, including of the deposition of plaintiff's demographer, Mr. Cooper, and they failed to appear. They designated no experts of their own, even before summary judgment closed and the court failed to award us the opportunity to extend fact discovery. After summary judgment was entered against them, and they knew that the remedy would apply to them, they did nothing to alert the district court that summary judgment was inappropriate against them. They even relied upon plaintiff's illustrative plan, which on appeal they now claim race predominated in its making, as a starting point for the court to develop its remedy, just a mere 13 days before, up until a mere 13 days before the court actually held a hearing on the remedy in this case. How can a plan that is a racial gerrymander be a starting point for the court to develop its remedy? And that is because they failed to waive that argument, or wage that argument during the district court's proceedings. They failed to develop any evidence to dispute the existence of racially polarized voting. They failed to develop any evidence that plaintiff's illustrative plan was not sufficiently large and not geographically compact during the district court's proceedings.
Well, their argument is that we weren't given that opportunity because the court entered summary judgment without letting us know first, so that we can argue against the entry of summary judgment. And so I'm going to ask you the same question that I asked you before in the prior case. Don't you think the plaintiffs in this case are better off in the long run if they are given that opportunity before we have a determination on the merits with a Section 2 violation finding by a district court in the 11th Circuit?
Your honor, plaintiffs are better off now that a district-based remedy that completely and fully cures their Section 2 violation is in place. It is just simply not the case based upon the record that the Board of Education was blindsided, sandbagged by the district court. Rule 56F is essentially about fairness, and the Board of Education had every opportunity to marshal facts and to develop legal arguments, and they failed to do so during the district court proceedings, and they failed even on appeal to raise any contradictory evidence to plaintiffs' Section 2 proof. And this circuit, in Restogos, a case cited in our brief, as well as the artistic entertainment case, recognized that formal notice of a summary judgment being under the advisement of a district court can be excused in the exact case that is here, which is the failure of the Board of Education to litigate this case during the district court proceedings, and on appeal, to raise nothing that contradicts the underlying facts of this case based upon pointing to any supplemental material or anything from the record which would change the outcome had formal summary judgment been given. They also now seem to want a trial, but the reason why they settled and conceded the existence of a Section 2 claim, the existence of racially polarized voting, the lack of opportunity for black voters to participate, is because they didn't have any money to litigate this case, and so they stood down during the district court proceedings, and now want to use additional judicial resources and have our clients potentially be denied their opportunity to participate because they failed to litigate the case before, during the district court proceedings. There's some, many inaccuracies raised that I wanted to correct, and the first is that our client should somehow have to wait until there is a sufficiently large district in Fayette County. That district exists now. The 2010 census reflects that there is sufficiently large black population in Fayette County.
Fayette County says you didn't have an expert say that you could draw a district for the Board of Education with an African-American majority district. Did you have, is that in the record?
That is not in the record, your honor. And so that, again, was, again, another prime example of an opportunity to raise an argument during the trial court proceedings. That is not part of the record, and they did not raise it, and it should not be considered by this court. The evidence of racially polarized voting, the fact that black folks have, that black people have not run since 2006 is inaccurate--
Don't you need that, though, in order to prevail on a Section 2 violation?
Do I need the--
Don't you need a, don't you need evidence to demonstrate that you could draw an African-American majority district?
We have that evidence. Mr. Cooper proposed a hypothetical plan that was as applicable to the five-member Board of Commissioners that uses an at-large electoral method as it is to the Board of Education. He drew a plan that was sufficiently large under Bartlett, that was geographically compact. The plan that plaintiffs proposed is unlike the plan that the Supreme Court in Lulac versus Perry found was non-geographically compact, because it contained two Hispanic communities over 300 miles apart that lacked any political cohesion and lacked shared socioeconomic status. Mr. Cooper and the court-drawn remedial plan reflect a black community that has shared interest in northern Fayette County, that they share houses of worship, they attend the same parks and recreation facilities, they share houses of worship, and importantly, they vote together as evidenced by the lack of contradictory evidence that they are not politically cohesive. For example, in a 2010 school board election, Laura Burgess ran as, for the Board of Education. She won 99 percent of black voter support and received 15 percent of white voter support, which is a recent example of black, of black person, a black candidate running, black voters coalescing their vote around that person, and because at-large voting operates in conjunction with racially polarized voting, black voters were denied the opportunity to have their candidate of choice sit on the Board of Education. With respect to this claim that black candidates cannot win in a Republican county, Emory Wilkerson ran in 2006 alongside three other black candidates against the lone white candidate who was a mechanic and a political novice. He received, this white candidate received more political support than all four black candidates combined, including Emory Wilkerson, who was then vice chairman of the Republican Party and a tax attorney. So these arguments that black voters and black candidates somehow don't qualify or can't, it's their fault, or it's not borne out by the uncontested record of racially polarized voting that exists in Fayette County. And with all due respect to this past November's election, which I know is outside of the record, black candidates are not, under Section 2, obliged to only elect black candidates. They are given the opportunity, under Section 2 and its broad remedial purpose, to elect their candidates of choice, and they can elect a person who is black, white, whatever color underneath the sun, and they did so in this past election. And so this idea that they also failed in this recent election is not borne out by the reality of the community that they live in. I also want to address this sort of nitpicking of our plan, and I mentioned Lulac. Benavides versus City of Irving out of Texas is also instructive to this court, based upon some of the arguments that our community contains three different populations of African-Americans. That's also not the case. The, again, the district, District 5, the remedial district, encompasses black voters and the two primary municipalities that are short distance from one another and near the concentration of the black community. And Benavides versus the City of Irving, the court found that it was appropriate and a plan could be geographically compact, even where isolated pockets of the community are grabbed in order, because they are close to the nexus of the community, and that is borne out by the District 5 that plaintiffs proposed, and also incorporates what the court I'd finally just like to remind the court, unless you have additional questions for me, that again, this case is ultimately about racial discrimination in voting. Plaintiff's have a proof under Section 2. That proof requires them to draw a geographically compact community, which they have done, which includes a minority community and a majority-minority community in Fayette County encompassing a compact community of black voters who share many things in common. That district is sufficiently large, satisfying Bartlett's bright line rule. They additionally have, without dispute, satisfied Jingles 2 and 3, the existence of stark levels of racially polarized voting, which is the essence of a vote dilution claim recognized by the Supreme Court, this court's, and all other courts. They have further found, developed evidence, uncontradicted by the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners, that the totality of the circumstances weighs in their favor. That five Senate factors demonstrated that they have no opportunity to elect their candidates of choice in Fayette. Two of those Senate factors are key Senate factors, the existence of racially polarized voting, and the lack of black electeds. There is no contradictory evidence to those, material contradictory evidence. And additionally, plaintiffs went on to establish three more Senate factors that weighed in their favor. All of that pointed in the direction that plaintiffs, at summary judgment, had, there was no genuine dispute of material fact that they could establish their Section 2 claim. It is simply too late for the Board of Education to, following historic remedial-based district elections, now come into court and try to upset the progress that has been made in Fayette County. They did not litigate the case during the district court proceedings. They in fact rested on a settlement that conceded exactly what plaintiffs ultimately were able to prove, which is a Section 2 case. And now they claim to be blindsided, unfair, unfairly treated by the district court, but represented by counsel. They stood down. They provided no experts to challenge their plaintiff's proof that they could establish the Jingles prerequisites. They put forth no experts to dispute the totality of the circumstances. The depositions that they were aware of, they simply did not show up to ask any questions or point any holes in plaintiff's case. And so now, on appeal, they are relying entirely upon the Board of Commissioners' arguments to upset once again progress that has been made to uproot racial discrimination in voting in Fayette County. And for those reasons, this court should affirm the district court's determinations, which are completely and entirely consistent with Section 2's broad remedial purpose, to provide black voters with the opportunity to elect their candidates of choice, as they did in this past November's elections, and as they should be provided the opportunity to do going forward and for all future generations. Thank you, your honors.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Wahlberg, you have reserved some time?
Thank you, your honor. Your honor, there's one thing I think I might agree with my opposing counsel on. We don't want to spend any additional resources on this case. That's why I implore your honors to look so closely at the Section 2 compactness, prong one prerequisite under Jingles. It is not there. There is clear proof that three things have to be done to get to the 50 percent Bartlett rule. Number one, you've got to do that plan down there on the left, or that one over there which the court did on the right, which has what is condemned by the Supreme Court over and over as a land bridge. That little, you had to get over there and halt and carve out that group of white folk in the yellow area on the top of that plan. That is a classic violation of traditional districting principles, subordinated to race consideration. That's not all.
Why are the boundaries of the Board of Education district different than the boundaries of the Board of County Commissioners?
There's no reason why they'd be the same. I mean, the legislature redistricts the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education redistricts itself, no other reason than that. Plus, you know, if I, we also endeavor to make the blackest, if you will, highest percentage of black districts specifically, that you could do consistent with our, with that plan up there.
But I don't understand, if you can draw a district with an African-American majority for the Board of County Commissioners, why can't you do it for the Board of Education?
They didn't. That's not a majority-black district up there. The Board of Commissioners is not majority-black.
Well, I thought the evidence in the record suggests that it's 50.23 percent--
No, no, that's, excuse me, your honor, that's the one down at the bottom-left. That's the plaintiff's plan they advocated.
Right. But what, that's what I'm asking then. If the plaintiff, if you can draft one for the Board of County Commissioners--
You can't. The one they drafted is for both. The plaintiff drafted the same one for both. Their illustrative plan is not distinguished. Bottom-left, plaintiff's plan, they say county or school board, they don't distinguish. The one up at the top is the Board of Commissioners' actual plan that they adopted, the legislature adopted.
Okay.
So three things have to be done to get to the required 50 percent, which is why this case stops.
All right, so, so back to this question, and I don't want to belabor that. You can draw a district with an African-American majority, then. It can be done.
Not constitutionally.
According to somebody.
Not constitutionally, and, and this is absolutely true, your honor.
Not constitutionally, and, and, and this is absolutely true, your honor. No evidence that can be done with equal populate, you have to deviate from the population.
But you didn't raise this issue below, though.
I'm sorry, your honor, I didn't hear you.
You, you did not raise this issue below, though, did you?
We never, we, we raised it when the remedy came, which is the only time we were in responding. We said, "That top-left district is as high a black percentage you can get, consistent with the requirements of the law." That was said over and over by the county during the remedy, by the Board of Education during the remedy phase. We did not respond to the, any summary judgment motion, because it was never made to us. The position that the 46% was as high a percentage you could get was made over and over by the Board of Education consistently throughout, including in the consent decree.
Right. But I guess my point is that you did not say that the remedial plan proposed was a violation. That you did not raise that below.
We did, by saying, we said this, your honor. We said that that plan on the top left, the 46%, that's as high as you can go, and everything beyond that disregards the requirement.
I understand, I understand what you're saying. You're saying there's an inference that any other plan would not be viable, but you did not actually argue that the specific plan proposed by the plaintiffs in this case was-
Well, we never had that, you know, the plan advocated by the plaintiffs was only at summary judgment, and we never had that brought against us. So, you're right, we didn't respond to the motion that was not brought against us. But that's the only time the plaintiff's plan was put into play. The evidence in the record by the expert for the county, and I'm just gonna read this one line, and this is undis-
I, I understand, but I guess my point is simply this. If you didn't raise it below, how can you argue it here now?
Because it would be raised in opposition to summary judgment, which is never brought against the county, I mean, against the Board of Education.
I understand your argument that you feel that you didn't have an opportunity to respond to the summary judgment, but that's a different argument than going to the merits.
Well, I don't see how it could be, honestly, because you don't get to the remedy without getting to summary judgment, number one. But number two, unquestionably, your honor, with regard to the remedy, we said that based on the record in this case, you can't go past that plan up on top number, top left, 46%. I don't think that's inferential of saying that anything beyond that, whether it's the plaintiff's Cooper's plan, or what ended up being the Wright plan, or anything else, is deviating from the, the requirements of the law, both in terms of traditional district criteria, non-subordination of those to race, plus the one-person-one-vote thing, which was, it was undisputed in the record at that point as a matter of fact. So, I think that those three things, and I just would, again, implore the court, because we do not want to spend money unnecessarily, and that first prong, it is not there. The plaintiffs never did, and they could not, put in evidence of plan that is one-person-one-vote compliant, that doesn't have less deviate, less gerrymandering than that, as well as some conglomerating the different people who may be 1% black or 99% black, who identify as multiple races, not black only. That's critical. There's nothing in the census that says, "How do you consider yourself primarily? How do you consider yourself politically?" These are multiracial people, which is a very different thing to, it really, it reminds me what the plaintiffs are doing and what the court sort of did inadvertently here by doing this. It's almost like going back to the old segregation race classification laws. If you have any black ancestry, bing, you are presumed to be black.
That's not accurate, though, because in this case, people are self-identifying themselves as black, and that's a very different thing than having somebody else impose upon you what your heritage may be.
It's the same in this regard, your honor. If everybody who was self-identifying as part black, even that may be 1% or 10% or whatever, if those people were shown, as a matter of evidence, to be cohesive, that's what the Supreme Court says, you can't make the racial presumption that people are fungible where there are different racial characteristics. That's the Supreme Court rule.
Well, actually, the Ashcroft footnote, I think, says exactly the opposite.
Your honor, with all due respect, I tried that case and argued that case, and that's not, the Ashcroft doesn't hold that. The Ashcroft case said, "We aren't at the, this, because we're at this 50% level, whether it's 46 or 50 or 50.2, that's why we're, that's why this issue comes up." Every other case, the Colton case, when it comes up, it's not material, because it makes no difference. If it's 2% difference or a half percent, it doesn't affect the outcome. This case is the first time where this issue has, you know, should be decided. Although, you don't have to decide it, because the one-person-one-vote deviation thing is crystal clear, undisputed. You can't draw a one person, a one-person-one-vote compliant district. You have to under-populate District 5 to get to 50%. That's an undisputed fact in the record. That, you cannot under-populate or over-populate based on race. That's the definition of invidious discrimination. You don't have a plus or minus 5% leeway in a case like that, and a court never has plus or minus 5% leeway.
All right.
So, thank you very much.
We have your arguments. Thank you. Court is in recess until 9 o'clock tomorrow morning.